Good evening. I'd like to call the November 5 Issaquah City Council meeting to order. Welcome, everyone. Councilmember Goodman is excused this evening and will not be joining us. I'd like to ask those who'd like to join the council, myself, and the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the next item on our agenda this evening is Audience Comments. Audience members, this is your time to address the council. The Guidelines for Public Participation are displayed on the screen, will be displayed on the screen over here. And we will be limiting comments to five minutes this evening. I'd also like to announce a new process for our council chambers for visual presentations. To ensure the security of our computer network, the USB port at the council lectern is no longer active. Visual presentations will now be coordinated in advance through the city clerk's office. And if you would like to give a visual presentation during a council meeting, please email to clerks@issiquahwa.gov prior to 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. And I wanted to thank everyone who is helping us maintain the security of our network system. So this evening, those who signed up on the sign-up sheet outside will be called up first. And if you did not sign up, I will be asking for other speakers before I close this portion of the meeting. If you're here as part of a group and as a spokesperson, please identify yourself. And if you are here with a group and want to express support for what any of the speakers are saying this evening at the lectern, please raise your hand so council can see the support in the room. There is also a public hearing tonight, AB 7610, Proposed 2019 Budget. And if you would like to make comments on this topic, you'll have an opportunity to do so later in the meeting when we open that public hearing. Tisha, has anyone signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, Gary Horvitz.
Thank you all. My name is Gary Horvitz. I live at 19811, 10th Place Northwest in Shoreline, Washington. I'm here because I'm the geotechnical engineer of record on behalf of ORA Talis and Resmark.
Gary, I'm going to get you to pull the microphone just a little bit closer to you.
How's that?
Perfect.
Okay. Like I said, I'm the geotechnical engineer of record on behalf of ORA Talis and Resmark. I'm currently in charge of the remedial landslide design at the Talis 9 site. I wanted to speak tonight about AB 7687, which is our request that the city council approve installation of permanent tiebacks in the city right-of-way. The context of the request is important because it's time-sensitive work that will benefit everyone involved. In August, ORA Talis submitted to the city its detailed plans for the fourth and final wall along Upper Shangri-La Way. ORA Talis is ready to begin construction as soon as the city approves the plans. These plans propose placing permanent tiebacks under the city's right-of-way to support the wall and the slope. These tiebacks would be well below the city's utilities or any other right-of-way needs of the city. The city approved similar tiebacks in the same right-of-way on September 16, 2014, in connection with the pre-landslide design for Talis Project, Talis Parcel 9. So there's a recent precedent where the city has determined that such tiebacks are appropriate and authorized. The plans we submitted this past August were analyzed by city staff and its engineering consultants. Only recently, the city has indicated that its previous approval of a permanent tieback easement was an error on the part of the city. If the council denies our request for tiebacks, ORA Talis must completely redesign Wall 4 without tiebacks. And from a practical point of view, this would be all but impossible for a project of this size. This will cause months of additional delay in stabilizing the slope. The city has not provided an engineering justification for rejection of the tieback design. If the city has one, we certainly would consider it and address it. In the agenda published for the meeting, city staff provided five reasons why the council should deny approval, but those reasons really amount to one. The city is concerned that the city may damage the tiebacks in the future when maintaining the right-of-way, but those concerns are already addressed in the design by keeping the tiebacks deep below Shangri-La. Another important point is the benefit that this has to the city. Construction of the Tier 4 wall would allow the removal of substantial amount of soil from in front of the wall. Currently, the soil acts as an increased destabilizing load on the slant slide material below it. By allowing excavation of this soil mass, which is only possible if tiebacks are allowed in the right-of-way, the overall stability of the Talis 9 site as well as Shangri-La Way and property above Shangri-La Way will be improved. Therefore, there's a very real and tangible benefit to the city of Issaquah in allowing the granting of the easement to go forward. We respectfully ask that the council approve the ordinance which would authorize the tieback design so that the final stabilization wall can be promptly installed. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Is there anyone else signed up this evening, Tisha?
No.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address council this evening? Second call for anyone who would like to address council during Audience Comments. And a last call. Seeing no one, we'll close Audience Comments and move to Committee and Regional Reports. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be chairing the Council Infrastructure Meeting, which will meet on November 15, 2018, here at Council Chambers at 6:30. We have three items on the agenda. First is AB 7687, Request for Right-of-Way Incumbrence, Talis Parcel 9. This is an action item. Second is AB 7649, Amendments to IMC 13.90 Water Sewer and Stormwater Recovery Contracts. This is also an action item. And the third is AB 7538 Water System Plan. This is a discussion item. I also have three Regional Committee reports. On October 17, I attended the King Conservation District Advisory Committee meeting. This is my first report out on this committee, so I also wanted to give a little bit more context around KCD, the King Conservation District. KCD promotes conservation through demonstration projects, educational events, and provides technical assistance, and provides or points the way to funds that are available for conservation. The Advisory Committee is working on a Theory of Change analysis. This is a analysis to understand and improve the outcomes from KCD's programs and services. And it involves defining the goals, and then middle and long-term outcomes and targets, and how the district will meet those goals. In this discussion, the committee also discussed the importance of engaging with young people and engaging with a more diverse audience. The overall mission of KCD, which this Theory of Change analysis will support, is to promote the sustainable use of natural resources through responsible stewardship. On October 25, I attended the Cascade Water Alliance Board meeting. There were only items on the Consent Agenda, and it was a very short meeting. These included authorizing the sale of a forklift as surplus property, as well as authorizing a replacement forklift, and authorizing purchase of replacement barrier boom material for the Lake Taps reservoir. The next meeting of Cascade Water Alliance Board will be November 28 at 3:30 at the Cascade Office in Bellevue. And then lastly, the Wyra 8 Salmon Recovery Council meeting will meet on, Salmon Recovery Council will meet on November 15. And I wanted to let you all know about one item which will be on the agenda for that meeting. On October 31, all partner jurisdictions of the Wyra 8 inter-local agreement for salmon recovery received a notice from Snohomish County that they anticipate not being able to pay their 2019 cost share to the inter-local agreement due to their budget constraints. I'll provide a little bit more information about this at good of the order. And this concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. The Services and Safety Committee will meet on November 14 at 6:30 here in Council Chambers. Just to note, this is a move from our normal Tuesday meeting time. We'll be meeting on Wednesday this week to accommodate the council budget session that is scheduled for November 13. The agenda will include Agenda Bill 7652, Hearing Examiner Appointment, Agenda Bill 7691, Startup 425 Interlocal Agreement, Southeast 62nd Street Public Art, Agenda Bill 7667, Art Grants Recommendation, Agenda Bill 7651, Human Services Grant Funding Recommendations, Agenda Bill 7689, Amending IMC 3.63 School Impact Fees, and Agenda Bills 7640, Amending School Impact Fees. A rather full agenda for us. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board will be meeting on November 8 at 4 o'clock at the Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters. The agenda will include a review and approval of letters of agreement with the union related to union membership, firefighter annual physicals, and special assignments. The board is also being asked to provide input into the 2019 legislative, or Agenda items, the 2019 legislative calendar, and the 2018 Fire Chief Evaluation. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Hunt for chairing the Infrastructure Committee this month because I can't make it. And I'll report on last month's Infrastructure Committee, which was on the 18th of October. And there we had two items. One, AB 7649, is on the Consent Calendar to refer it back to committee for a little additional work. We looked at it, we needed a little more staff work and some things cleared up. So I'll be back in committee this month. And then on Consent is also 7647, on consent today on water charges. And that takes care of that. Last Friday, I was at the Washington State Public Works Board, and also I'll be there on the 7th of December, working there a lot with, dealing with more money coming in finally to get loans out to cities and water districts and so forth, to get infrastructure projects funded in a more cost-efficient way. And we're working really hard with the legislature to fully fund that program for next year so that will be even better. And so we're working on really getting some systems in place to do that. There, folks are looking at that. The Public Works Board is really effective in getting money out and loaned out and returned back to our other projects, and so other folks in legislature are looking to use that in expanded ways. So we're dealing with that as well. It's very fun. Eastside Transportation Partnership is coming up this Friday. I will be there. I sent you all a note with a copy of their proposed legislative agenda for 2019, asking for comments. They will want to be voting on it in their December meeting, so they'll be discussing it there, more so than getting comments back that folks brought. So if you have any comments for that, please try to get them to me by Friday. That'd be great. We can get them included. It's very similar to last year, so it's not a dramatic change. But one of the things of note is they are also pushing, as many other organizations, they're encouraging the legislature to fully fund the Public Works Board, that I just talked about the account, as we are as well to fund that. So that's a lot of good work, support of that process. On the 14th, I'll be attending the Emergency Management Advisory Committee, and that agenda's not set yet. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. The Growth Management Policy Board met last Thursday, November 1, at PSRC Headquarters in Seattle. The main item on the agenda was the discussion and deliberation on the options to be evaluated in the draft supplemental environmental impact statement that goes along with the vision update, the Vision 2050 update. The three different alternatives that were approved by the GMPB were, one, which was stay the course, which is the typical no-action alternative. EIS always requires a no-action alternative. And that would, that option will, they'll look at how continuing the growth shares among counties and cities as they are allocated in the current vision. The second alternative is something called transit-focused growth, which would direct more than is currently allocated to areas with existing or planned high-capacity transit. So they call that the transit-focused growth. And then there's, the third alternative they'll be studying is something called the reset urban growth, which would actually see less growth in these high-capacity transit centers and more spread out around the counties and cities than it is today. So those are the three alternatives that will be evaluated as part of the draft SEIS, and that is something that will be complete and available to inform the final vision completion in 2019. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Counsel President Batis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On October 18, the Eastside Human Services Forum Board met. We spent the majority of the time in our meeting discussing the work plan, the draft work plan, and getting board feedback on those goals. Also, first chance to review the proposed 2019 legislative agenda, so I'll have more about that as that comes together, and then the proposed 2019 budget. The next meeting is November 15 in Bellevue. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Council President Mertz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee has a meeting coming up on November 14. Couple of things of potential interest to this council. One is, I believe, final action on the 2019 SCA legislative agenda. I have sent you all two things related to this. One is the minutes from the last SCA meeting. I would, I think I characterized that conversation as robust last time, and robust it was. So you can see that in the minutes. The second thing I sent was the updates from the board from the 1022 meeting that shows the revised legislative update. I would say that the net outcome of the pick meeting was relatively minor, sort of, I don't want to say typo level, but I think if you compare the legislative agenda that was in the October pick packet with what's in the, comes out of the 1022 meeting, there are not substantial changes. But if you have any further thoughts on that packet, on that proposed legislative agenda, please let me know. The second piece is the other robust conversation we had that evening, which was around the Regional Affordable Housing Task Force. And the minutes will show what I mean by a robust conversation. There was lots of feedback. So that one doesn't have any final action, and it's still listed for this upcoming meeting as a potential future action item, which means we are not yet on the first of the two formal reviews that would be necessary prior to a regular adoption by the SCA pick. I see no reason why we would have an emergency one meeting adoption. So the punchline is that this one is not coming up fast, but it is, for anyone interested in this topic, a good glimpse to how a number of cities are looking at this proposed plan. Oh, and there is a pre-pick workshop that, I don't know if this interests people, but I will just say, the title is "Don't Feed the Trolls: Addressing Toxic Social Media in Your Community." So that would be the pre-pick meeting. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Onto the mayor's report. There will be an executive session this evening, discuss pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110 per N1 per NI. And this item is expected to last 30 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow in open session. For the rest of the mayor's report, I'm going to provide you with a brief update on a couple of projects and a program. Newport Way Roundabout, that's currently under construction. Roundabout outside of the Anthology, also known as Gateway Project Apartments on Newport Way, has been under construction for about 18 weeks. Weather permitting, the following activities will be completed. This week, hopefully, final paving and remaining concrete work for the sidewalk and the center roundabout. Next couple of weeks, permanent signs will be installed, and the crossing on the Anthology side will be paved, which is a portion of the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trail system. And over the next couple of months, the crossings of Newport Way will not be open until we have permanent pavement marking and rapid flashing crosswalk beacons installed. In March of 2019, permanent lighting fixtures will be installed in this area as well. The new roundabout features multi-use pathways as well as crosswalks for the roadways. On-street bikes may merge with traffic to travel through the roundabout, or use the ramp connections from the road to the multi-use trails and crosswalks. Second project I wanted to give you an update on tonight was the Forest Rim Booster Pump Station. This is up at the top of Squawk Mountain. This project is being, this pump station is being constructed to replace an existing booster pump station that has reached the end of its useful life. Once complete, the project will increase the reliability and resiliency of water service to the highest Issaquah neighborhoods on Squawk Mountain. Last Friday, this construction project reached a milestone when two nine-stage high-head vertical turbine pumps were lowered into place inside the new pump station. Construction continues, on budget, and is proceeding on schedule. The startup expected to occur before the end of the year. And the last item I wanted to include in the mayor's report this evening was the 2018 Farmer's Market Season Wrap-Up Report. The 2018 Farmer's Market at Pickering Barn ran from May 5 through September 29. City Parks and Recreation Department is responsible for the management of this great weekend activity. A total of 115 different vendors participated throughout the season. 25 of those vendors were new to the market this year. It was a great mix of traditional and new. Total sales for the season set a record at $1.104 million. Previous record was last season in 2017, so we're trending in the right way. Our produce vendors donated over 16,000 pounds of produce to the Issaquah Food Bank throughout the 22 Saturdays of the season. And there were 45 performances by a variety of entertainers throughout the season, adding to a great family-friendly feeling at the market. So hats off to Parks and Recreation employees, Jara, Cynthia, and Nina, for their fantastic work managing and coordinating the successful city program. And that's it for the mayor's report this evening. We'll be proceeding to the Consent Calendar. The Consent Calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the Consent Calendar will be considered together and approved in one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
Yes.
Thank you. Deputy Clerk has a minor correction that she'd like to put on the record before moving to the approval of the Consent Calendar.
To AB 7684, Position Reclassifications, a correction to the motion replacing Sustainability Coordinator 2 with Resource Conservation Coordinator 1.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the Consent Calendar and consider it under regular business? And can I get a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move we adopt the Consent Calendar as listed in this evening's published agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on our agenda this evening is public hearing, AB 7610, the Proposed 2019 Budget. This is the first of two required public hearings on the 2019 budget, and I'd like to invite Budget Manager Christina Reller to make a presentation.
The preliminary budget was presented by you on October 15, 2018, and was filed with the city clerk. Tonight, I will do a brief overview of the preliminary budget, and then there will be a public hearing. State law requires us to hold public hearings during the budget process as a means to accept public comment on the preliminary and final budget. So tonight will be the public hearing on the preliminary budget. A public hearing on the final budget will be held on December 3, 2018. Much of tonight's material has been provided and is available at the city's website, at City Hall, and the Issaquah Library. The 2019 preliminary budget authorizes $144.5 million in expenditures in 2019. $52.7 million of that is general fund. This budget also authorizes 275.38 FTEs, up from 264.88 FTEs in 2018. This is a combination of new and converted limited-term positions. The mayor's preliminary budget proposes to preserve core services and emphasize customer service for residents. Improvements in the city's information technology cybersecurity will protect data infrastructure and public funds. It invests in customer services and interacting with city government, including self-service tools, utility billing, and in recreation. And it plans to update the city's website. There's also a proposal for a new customer response management system. This budget includes funding to complete the city's first strategic plan, which will form the basis for linking the 2020 budget and the capital improvement plan with the city's strategic priorities. Total revenues for all funds is budgeted at $134.91 million. Over 50% of this is from taxes and charges for services. Total expenditures for all funds is appropriated at $144.55 million, with over 50% on personnel and capital expenditures. Again, the city's general fund is presented as a balanced budget with revenues and expenditures both budgeted at $52.7 million. Council has begun holding work sessions, which will continue through October and November. The final public hearing and anticipated budget adoption is scheduled for December 3, 2018. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Does council have any questions? Any questions? The Guidelines for Citizen Comments also apply to those being made under a public hearing. And Tisha, can we get those back up on the overhead things? I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:27 and ask if anybody has signed up to speak this evening.
Daphne Gan.
On up, Daphne.
Hello, I'm Daphne Gan, 22539 Southeast 45th Street. I live in Providence Point. I regularly watch the council's meetings and the budget meetings on Channel 21, and it has given me a very good understanding of the challenges facing the council. I understand that there has been comments about a traffic light on 43rd Street, which is Southeast 43rd Street, which of course is very important to the people in Providence Point. There have been discussions that maybe this was a legacy issue for the city. And though there was never a written agreement, there were many people who lived in Providence Point 15 years ago, and they were left with the strong impression that if they voted to join Issaquah, the city would do something about a traffic light on Southeast 45th Street. Now, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Providence Point, especially for those folks who don't get up there often. Providence Point has about 1,000, over 55 units. They have 1,500 residents. The average age is about 78. This is an active, friendly community. They are drivers, and they vote. They have one of the highest voting records in the city. Now, I think you'd probably like a little, to know a little bit about what the people in Providence Point do to support the city of Issaquah. The city of Issaquah has volunteers at Eastside Children's Corner, Pub Davy Corner. They have volunteers at the food bank. They have volunteers at several of the museums, the Fish Hatchery, the Sound to Mountain Greenway, the Bellwood Foundation, which is a senior citizen's assisted living home. And in addition to that, they also spend a lot of money in Issaquah. I oftentimes see many people from Providence Point when I go shopping at Fred Meyer or Costco. Now, I think you'd also like to know a little bit about what the people in Providence Point worry about. Okay? First of all, they worry they're going to be hit by an SUV when they go shopping because they have to make a left turn onto Southeast 43rd Street. they have to make a left turn onto Southeast 43rd Street. They also worry about, is their vision going to fail? Is there going to be a cure for cancer? Are the Seahawks ever going to win another Super Bowl? And surprisingly, they worry about whether or not their savings are going to outlast them, their lifespan. Now, I know that the city of Issaquah has a lot of demands on them. Listening to you talk about all the problems that you're handling quite nicely, but I do think that this, and I realize this is not probably the place you're going to discuss it tonight, but I do think that it would be wonderful for the people in Providence Point if we knew that you were going to fund that traffic light. I also want you to know that it's not only the people in Providence Point. Just two Thursdays ago, there was an accident at that intersection. The people involved in the accident, one was a workman with a pickup, and the other were two youngish people in a car. So it's not only the people in Providence Point who are going to benefit from the improvements to a very scary intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, Daphne. Bruce Eder.
Well, it's hard to follow up that dynamic presentation by Daphne. I'm president of Providence Point, Bruce Eder, at 4251 Providence Point Drive. And this has been something, I've been in Providence Point 10 years. This is something that's been on everybody's mind there for a long time. As Daphne said, we're a 55-plus community, 1,500-plus residents, and 1,008 units. The campus consists of seven villages. Six of the seven villages are located on the north side of 43rd, where the town hall and clubhouse and the north community building are located. One village, the second-largest village, over 200 units, is located on the south side of 43rd. Currently, there's no safe way to cross on foot, for sure, and it's difficult even in a car. Even crossing in cars hazardous, given the speed of cars driving up the hill. There's no way to turn left onto 43rd from the main exit. Turning left from Forest Village side is also difficult, compounded by the high speed of the traffic on 43rd that's often traveling 50 miles an hour coming up there. I just want to ask the council to consider funding this. It's been a long time in coming. Forest Village on the other side was built more recently, and we've had tremendous increases in traffic coming up and down that hill. And I think this is a very worthwhile project, certainly for the community. And I thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Anyone else signed up? Tisha?
No.
Would anyone else like to address the council during this public hearing? A second call to see if anybody would like to address the council, and a third and final call. I'm closing the public hearing at 7:34, and there is no proposed council action on the budget at tonight's meeting. Budget deliberations will continue at work sessions scheduled for November 7th, November 13th, and tentatively, if needed, on November 17th. A public hearing on the final 2019 budget will occur at the December 3 regular council Next item on the agenda is, under regular business, AB 7611, proposed 2019 budget levy and revenue sources. The required public hearing on this item occurred on October 22nd, special council meeting. Tonight, council action is requested to adopt the proposed ordinance. I'd like to invite Revenue Manager Ruth Riddle to make a presentation.
Good evening. How's everyone tonight? We are going to be proposing the adoption at this second hearing of the 2019 proposed property tax levy. But before we do, we are going to answer a couple of questions that came from the first public hearing. And so the first question was, how is the property tax increase calculated? So we're doing a little math, and we'll just walk you through how the increase is calculated. So we start with the prior-year actual, and we multiply it by 1%, so a fairly simple calculation. And then the county provides us the estimated revenue on new construction, which we add to that amount. So the total in the proposed property tax level is the amount you see there, the 9.1 So any further questions on the answer to question number one?
That's President Marts.
I'll ask, how's that 195, or almost 196, how does that compare to recent years? Is that a, is that a healthy number this year? Is that lower than the last few?
I don't know how it compares, but it's not unusually large. It's fairly typical. It's an estimation, and that could typically go up.
City Administrator Moon?
If I recall, if I recall off the top of my head, I think the average over the last couple of years has been a little bit closer to 230. So it's a little bit lower than average, a little bit lower than we expected. We actually double-checked that number a couple of times with King County. That's the number that's ringing a bell in my head, but it's still within the range that we have seen. It does vary a little bit more than you would expect from year to year.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
Okay, so we'll move on to question two. So what is the property tax levy rate for 2019? And that is another calculation. And so you start off with the assessed property value. And the calculation is that you take the assessed property value, which is 11 billion, and you divide that by 1,000. And then you use that result to divide into the allowable levy per King County that comes on their worksheet. And so the formula is as you see there, and the result is .80785. And that is the levy at the current time. That's a moving number. Any other questions on that, Mr. Winterstein?
Just to clarify, thank you for that, Ruth. I think I asked the question. I appreciate it. And I think you called it the allowable levy. Did that, is that at 101% then of last year? So that includes the 1%?
No, that is beyond what we're actually proposing that we levy this year. So the proposed levy is the 9.1 million, but the allowable levy on the King County worksheet is the 9.266.
Okay, so the .80785 is, is the allowable, not with the extra 1%?
It is not based on what we're proposing that we levy, which is just to increase by the 1%. So we could increase further. That's the allowable levy.
Arne, I thought I understood.
Administrator Moon.
Ruth, is that because of the banked capacity that we have not elected to utilize?
We have banked capacity, yes. And I could go through those numbers if you're interested, but the allowable levy is the levy that we could choose to adopt, but we are only raising, we're only proposing that we raise 1%.
Ruth, I think it might be helpful to explain banked levy.
Okay. We had five years, I think, beginning in 2008. We went for five successive years where we did not increase our property tax levy by the legal 1%. And so that lack of increase is banked. But over time, that banked amount goes up and down. It fluctuates. And so at the current time, I think we have a banked capacity of about 178,000 beyond our 1% increase that we could levy.
Councilmember, no?
Yeah.
Winterstein.
Let me ask it another way, because I might be confusing myself. So, thanks to you for your patience, Ruth. .80785, is that the number used in the proposed budget to calculate the property tax collections?
The actual calculation against the proposed levy would be less than that, because this is using the allowable levy.
Okay, so then the rate that is proposed is?
Is less than that. I don't have it in front of me, but it would be .7 something.
Administrator Moon?
I believe it's in your packet. I think it's .79338.
So Ruth, just to clarify, at some future date, if the council chose to, in a given year, use the 1%, they also could opt in that time to use their banked capacity. It's something that they could draw on at a later date.
Correct.
But it's not been proposed that we use any of that this year. We're just doing the simple 1%.
Correct.
Okay, and so that proposed rate, thank you, it is in Appendix D, .793, I can round, does, is, include the 1% increase?
Yes. Correct.
Any other questions? Council President Marts.
So, I'm sorry, is it .79 something, or is it .80 something that we're actually talking about tonight?
It's .807, the calculation based on the allowable, but it's .79 the amount that Emily read in Exhibit D.
In our preliminary budget?
In our proposed preliminary levy, property tax levy.
The answer to the question is, what is the property tax levy rate for 2019 in the preliminary budget is the number that Administrator Moon stated, and the maximum allowable is what they're seeing here.
Correct.
That's clarity.
Okay, so if we pass the bill that's in front of us this evening, what will our tax rate be?
.79, I believe Emily read it.
79...
338.
338. How does that compare to other municipalities on the east side?
Well, I happen to have brought that comparison. So 2018 King County levies. So for example, the levy rate in Seattle is 9.56. The levy rate in Auburn is 14.1. The levy rate in Bellevue is 9.119. There are many others. So ours is quite a bit lower.
So that 9 point something what per what? Because that's 80 cents per thousand assessed value, and 9 point something is in what per what?
For Bellevue.
Yeah, and what's the units? Because that's an order of magnitude larger than the number that we're, than .79338.
Put a zero in front of it, yes. .0.
I see. It's, okay, so Bellevue is .0919.
Right.
Seattle is .0956.
Correct.
Gotcha. I'm sorry?
It's not 0, it's not .09.
.9. Sorry, .9. So, okay, so we're lower than those cities that you mentioned?
We are.
Okay. Got it. Would you happen to know Kirkland or Redmond? Or Sammamish?
Kirkland, .99.
Do you know Redmond or Sammamish? Okay. And our friends, our friends up on the plateau, last but not least, Sammamish? Is the last one, I promise.
Okay. .10.
Or 1.0. All right, so we're lower than everybody. Mentioned. Not every, not everybody, everybody that I asked for, Seattle, Auburn, Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, Sammamish. We have a lower mill rate than all those people.
It appears we do, yes.
Awesome. That is good news and what I was hoping to hear from you. Thank you.
Ruth, a clarifying question on that. If the council were to opt in the future to use the banked capacity, would we be in the same range as those other cities?
Well, it would, it would increase it. As we just saw with this example, if we use our allowable, it's higher than just raising it the 1%.
Just a .80785, which is still significantly lower. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Ruth.
Okay, so I believe we're recusing council action tonight, levying the general taxes for the city of Issaquah for the fiscal year commencing January 1 on all property, both real and personal, which is subject to taxation for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue to carry on the services of the city for the ensuing year as required by law.
Thank you, Ruth. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll move to adopt ordinance number...
2848.
Levying the general taxes for the city of Issaquah for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2019, on all property, both real and personal, in said city, which is subject to taxation for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue to carry on the services of said city for the ensuing year as required by law.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? No council discussion? Oh, Councilmember Winterstein.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out, one of the things I've been trying to do is track the levy rate over time. It is a complex question. If you're not aware, it's state law that restricts that we can only collect up to 1% more than we did the year before, as the calculation was shown there. But because of our increasing values of our properties, since, just my own property since 2013, has increased in value 65%, but my net out-of-pocket taxes has only increased 16% over that time for this percentage. There's, there's a lot of other property taxes on our bills. There's school, there's state, there's many other. There's the water, the library district. But for the city portion that we just discussed, in this time when, when my house has increased in value, assessed value of 65%, the city's collecting only 16% more than it was in 2013. Just another way to kind of look at that, I think largely because we're very dependent upon sales tax as a primary source of revenue for our general fund, which is about 30% of our revenues. And the, this property tax is about 18% revenue of our total general fund revenues as well. And that's one of the reasons we have a lower rate, and I think it's a good sign that we've continued to be very good stewards in managing both their demand for funds and our revenue sources over this period of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of adopting ordinance number 2848, levying the general taxes for the city of Issaquah for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2019, on all property, both real and personal, in said city, which is subject to taxation for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue to carry on the services of said city for the ensuing year as required by law, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? It carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda this evening is good of the order. Do council members have anything for good of the order? Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to update the council with a bit more information about the ongoing development regarding the YR8 Salmon Recovery Council, which I mentioned in the regional report. So, on October 31, the partner jurisdictions, including Issaquah, were notified that Snohomish County anticipates not being able to pay its 2019 cost share to the inter-local agreement, which funds the YR8 Salmon Recovery Council work. And Jason Mulvihill-Kunz, who's the Salmon Recovery Manager, wrote a, also provided information and wrote a letter to let the membership know that the partnership remains strong, and additionally, they are evaluating possible solutions that would maintain the county as a partner. Although the Snohomish County Council is still considering the county's draft 2019 budget and could restore funding, they took the step of sending this notification letter, and we will be discussing the possible implications and what this means for the budget for the Salmon Recovery Council at the November 15 meeting. So I wanted to let the council know about this development. I will be providing more information as, after that discussion and if there are further developments. But if there are any questions for me or feedback for that November 15 discussion, please let me know. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Hunt. And thank you for the update you gave me this week on that as well. That was something I had questioned you about as well. Councilmember Ray?
So it's November, which brings us Movember and No Shave November. Both these campaigns are designed to raise awareness of, and funds for men's health issues, including prostate cancer, testicular cancer, and mental health. Testicular cancer has doubled in the last 50 years. Prostate cancer rates will do the same in the next 15 years, and 500,000 men will take their own lives this year. There's widespread stigma and silence surrounding these three health issues. But thanks to Movember and No Shave November, the state of crisis in men's health is currently finding itself a little, finding itself being reversed. So if you see your friends or family or coworkers looking a little scruffy, like President Martz, ask them about men's health issues and what they can do to improve outcomes for our brothers, fathers, sons, and friends.
Thank you. Anything else for good of the order? I had one item. Our communications manager, Autumn Monahan, had sent you all an email asking about, for some input on neighborhood feedback. She gave several options and several choices of how you could do it. Part of our neighborhood engagement program several years ago, when we adopted it, was making sure that we provided information to council to help you engage and help you understand what's going on. So I'm not sure if she put a deadline on that or not, but it would be great if we could have some sort of feedback by Friday. That would be nice. It could be a really simple report. It can be more robust. It's kind of up to you all, so would love to hear back on that. And the next thing I had was just talking about some of the meetings that are coming up. We talked about some budget work sessions, November 7 at 6:30 p.m. here in Chambers, November 13, 6:30 p.m. here in Chambers, and a potential tentative Saturday budget session on November 17, starting at 9 a.m. Council, City Administrator Moon, I don't remember where the location of that one is, also in Chambers? In Chambers as well. November 19, regular council meeting at 7 p.m. has the following potential agenda items on it. The Old Town Subarea Plan Update Approval, Central Issaquah Zoning for Old Route 10 and Intensive Commercial Areas Approval, Human Services Grant Funding Recommendations, and Proposed Amendments to the Central Standards Table, 4.3B Permitted Uses in Central Issaquah. Next thing on our agenda this evening is an executive session. As earlier announced, there will be an executive session held this evening to discuss items related to pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110, PRN 1, PRNI. This item is expected to take 30 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow an open session. And so we will now recess into executive session at 7:54.
And he's part of that. [S02] Oh interesting. [S01] You would never guess it. [S03] So we are back in open session at 8:29 PM and there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned at 8:29 PM.
Well it's...